Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. It has been duly advertised.
I believe so.
Now, with the board's permission, I'd like to switch up the agenda and make public comment to follow the presentation on the community center.
Come with me.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Well, in favor of switching up the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any unfinished business?
No, there is not.
Supervisors' comments. Dan, you want to start, if anything?
Thank you to everyone coming out. It's pretty overwhelming to see you all here. Looking forward to the conversation that's bound to occur. I don't have much else to add at this time that hasn't already been said. Thank you.
Fine. I'll wait till, I'd like to wait till the end to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Nancy?
I'm sure. Just say thank you to everyone who's out today. And I'm with Supervisor Manny. I'm going to wait till the end. I have lots of concerns, and I just think we all just want a clarification on what the total cost is and look forward to the presentation.
I'll wait till the end as well.
Okay, I have just two brief announcements. The first tomorrow at 2:20, thank you to Sinclair Salisbury, our manager of emotional service, emergency services. Sinclair has alerted us to a national alert to our, to our personal cell phones tomorrow at 2:20. So you might want to silence them. I guess it's a national emergency alert. So don't be frightened if that all, all of a sudden you have a blast out of your cellphone. And also, on, on this Saturday, at Central Park, we're going to celebrate commemoration of Diane Herring, who was the first female supervisor in Doylestown Township. There'll be a little ceremony at 11 o'clock in Central Park. That's all I have. Okay, all right, now on to the business at hand, the presentation of the Community Recreation Center and Park Improvements. Who is beginning?
I'll start.
Thank you.
At the conclusion of the Board of Supervisors July 18th meeting, you authorized the staff and consultants to move forward with the bidding of the Community Recreation and Park Improvement Project. On September 18th, bids for the project were open and read publicly. At this afternoon's meeting, you will hear from our consultants, MKSD and Quattrofoil on the project, the results of the bid, along with their recommendations regarding the award of the bids. In addition, you will hear about other costs associated with the project, as well as debt service for the project. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sylvia Hoffman and Ryan Kennedy from MKSD to present the bids to the board.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you to make a final review of the project and hear the discussion and comments and hopefully the vote at the end of the evening. My name is Sylvia Hoffman. I'm the partner in charge and architect on this project. I've been working with Ryan Kennedy, the Director of Project Management, from my office on this project for the last three years, and we're very aware of the details of it. So we wanted to do a brief presentation to make sure that everyone understands the scope of work for the rec center and the park project. You can see on the screen, this is your existing park here right behind the township building, municipal building. The first area right behind the township municipal building is the location for the new recreation building and the associated expanding park, expanded parking that is part of the plan. Directly behind that are the tennis courts that are, tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, and bocce courts that are also part of the project. And then just to plan north of that, the Comfort Cottage, which is proposed for toilet rooms associated with the play area and the kids' castle in that, in that area as well. So that's the scope of the work for the project. The next slide shows the floor plan for the recreation building itself. Many of you have probably already seen this, having, having been to past meetings, and it's also available on the township website, I believe. But you can see on the screen, the floor plan of the building. The bottom... So the bottom right-hand corner is the entrance into the building. There is a small office and a welcome desk as you walk in. Directly down the hallway is a single gymnasium. You can see the basketball court striping on the floor there. That basketball court can also double as a space for volleyball, for tennis, for pickleball, but really it's a multipurpose room that can go beyond recreation. Down this single corridor that extends from the lobby to the park side of the building, there is one large multipurpose room that can be divided into three individual smaller rooms if someone has a need for a smaller room. And there's some storage and a sink in each one of those as well. There's also a patio area that can be used partially in winter, in the spring, summer, really more of like a three-season room with some closing garage doors that closes that space off. A few amenities in the building, a warming kitchen, that's 350 square feet, and then there's also toilet rooms, and all of the light blue is the building's storage. So this plan was developed in conjunction with the residents of Doylestown Township, based on the comments that we heard from them in the meetings that we had, the public meetings we had with them, as well as the Board of Supervisors. We went back and forth on many iterations of this floor plan until we settled on this one and proceeded with the construction documents. I'd like to review the schedule of this project with you. We're all three years older since we started this project. We were awarded the project in September of 2020, and we started about a six-month period of research and data collection, and that involved public meetings, information gathering, interviews with the various groups that would use this building to understand what their needs were. And once we developed all of the data and research, we developed a facility program, so what you saw that we presented, multipurpose room, gymnasium, et cetera. And that was the phase two of the project, which lasted from March to June of 2021. On June 15th, we had a board meeting, and we presented the preliminary findings. And then we proceeded, the rest of that year, high-level conceptual development of the exterior of the building. That was the completion of the feasibility study, and the board authorized us at that point to proceed with the actual design of the building. So the design development documents and the site approvals took place during that time period until July of this year. Again, we did multiple public presentations in regards to what we were designing and received board authorization, as was mentioned, on July 18th, to put the project out to bid. Project was bid in the late summer, and as was mentioned, we received the bids recently, and looking to do a final review and award of contracts. We're estimating that the construction of this facility will take approximately 14 months. I'm going to turn over the review of the bids to Quattrofoil, the construction management consultant on this project, to review those.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. As was stated, we received the bids. You can see right here, it was a four-trade bid. We had a GC, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical. Some of the other costs that we have in here weren't bid out. These were the, they were bid out, but they're costs that we're carrying. So the first one is general contractor. The winning bid came in at $7.293 million. Plumbing, a 422. Electrical bid was $1.55 million, and then 528 for the mechanical. We had soft costs of $1.8 million. That includes some of the flooring, you know, the finishing of the, the courts, the finishing and the flooring located inside the gymnasium, some other costs, some signage, some security for inside the building. And then you can see the Comfort Cottage, we had set aside $633,000, and then consulting fees to date at $670,000. So that brings our grand total to $12,913,800. When we were here earlier in the summer, I think, you know, we had put an estimate out there just from our, our market knowledge, and it was roughly 13.8, I think is what it came in. So through some VE efforts that we've done and through the bidding process and competition, that number got down to the 12.9 million. So if you go on to the... So, again, you can see it here in the bid tabulation, the electrical, plumbing, HVAC, general construction, the bathrooms, which we're calling the Comfort Cottages, and the design and consultant fees, you got that 12.9. So you can see, Ed, the breakdown here of the funding offset. So internal, $720,000 with another, you know, $400,000 from other reserve transfers. You've got the external grants, roughly one and a half million, one, another one and a half million for fundraising. So it looks like, you know, the, the bond amount would be 8,793, which results in an annual, an annual debt service cost of $631,000 or $93.41 per household. So those are the, those are the numbers. Again, you know, the, the RFP process, there was a lot of questions. We had a lot of responses for all, all four of the trades. Went back with, with questions with some of those. We had one or two that had to rescind, two, two different responses that they had to rescind. So they sent us those rescind letters, and we pulled those. And this is what we were left with, with the lowest bids. All contractors and that, that the township has used before that, as, you know, industry, are, are industry leaders and guys that we viewed before and are very comfortable with. So due diligence was done there. Now, as you can see, this is, this is the number we're, we're set with. Any questions?
No, Anthony, I heard that you just, you two just drove in from Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for, thank you for making the meeting.
Of course. Thank you.
I have questions about a lot of this.
Okay.
When we did, when we met in September, we were given the budget and the project, and it was broken into three projects. Now we're being presented this project in the bid form, but one of the things we had asked for was if we wanted to slow-step this project or be able to, you know, pick and choose from this project depending on how, are all of these bids contingent? So if we, for instance, if we award the general construction bid, we're then obligated to bid to approve all those other bids. Is that correct in order for the project to move forward? I mean, you obviously don't need HVAC for the bathrooms or the courts.
So, so when you say there's three, so there's the Comfort Cottage, right?
Comfort Cottage, the courts, and the building.
Courts and the building. So the Comfort Cottage is separate. So I think we can pull that out because that was, that's a separate capital.
It's separate, but there was also some pretty major electrical upgrades. The last we had seen, it was like, the total was 800 because they needed electricity up there to run hardwired for security cameras. So is that part of this?
That was not part of the electrical, no, it was not part of the, the bids that we, we got for the...
So that's not included in this?
That is included. $633,000 is the, the cost that's, that's been, I believe earmarked by the township for the Comfort Cottages. So what I'm telling you is that's a separate, that's a separate project that we've included in this based on a budget given to, by the township, but it was not part of the bid, the RFP process.
The bid for that, so that would be something we'd have to add. Is that safe to say?
No, there's nothing to add. That, that $633,000 number...
I'm just trying to understand the number.
I know, I'm just saying, that encompasses the cost of the building and, and the work that goes along with it. What is it broken out, Stephanie? It was like four something and two something, right?
Right.
I mean, we have those numbers. We've been provided them.
I haven't seen...
Here, I'll just...
I just want to, I'm going, right.
I'll try to clarify for you real quick. So when you look at this image here, the Comfort Cottage is down here.
Right.
There are electrical and security upgrades that will be required to do that.
Absolutely.
In that package, we've set aside $633,000, which is included in the $12.9 million. That, that 633 is on top of the bid values. We only bid the primes.
I understand.
So those four bid numbers are in that total 12.9. The other numbers, we added to it to get to the total 12.9.
Right.
So if you wanted to bifurcate that project, you could take that 633, set it out, and you drop your thing, you drop your overall number to 12.3 with that project on hold, right? And then if you wanted, again, to bifurcate the courts out, that would take some math and take some work because to get the best number and the best value for you all, we bid that all.
Right, I understand. The more you group together, the better the deal you get. I get that. I get that. That's the whole scaling. But, but I guess what my concern is and why I'm asking is that in order to, and I'm just going to get straight to the chiefs, is if we award these bids, it sets it up that we have to go forward with the entire project the way it's set up now with these bids. Is that correct? Just yes or no? Is it right?
I, I don't know the answer. That's probably a question for your solicitor. I mean, if you want, if you wanted to, if you wanted to get the best value, you all did it once. Now, certainly if you task us to, we could talk to the bidders and say, hey, what would it be to phase this into two phases?
Right. Do you have that now phased to do just the building and then do the other two? Is that how you had it?
I don't believe, Ryan, that's not how you bid. No, that's not how the big package...
I don't know. I'm, I'm just... Go ahead, Jeff.
Because it's on. You would have to either negotiate change orders, which is very difficult to do, or you would have to go out for separate bids for the Comfort Cottage and the courts. However, if you award the general construction bid, you need to award the other three because you have to have HVAC, plumbing, electrical in the rec building. Conversely, you just can't award the minor primes, so to speak, and not award the general contract and nothing for them to construct. So you can't, on the current state of the bids, separate out the Comfort Cottage or the courts at present.
No, Comfort Cottage.
That's not true, yes.
There's not a separate bid for that, though, is there?
You can, you can separate the Comfort Cottage.
All right, then that's fine. I didn't...
You can't, right, right now, the bid, the RFP, as it was put out, was for the courts and the recreation building in totality. So...
So is there a separate bid that's been received for the Comfort Cottage yet?
No, it's co-stars.
It's co-stars. It's co-stars. And then we have the engineering and site work that go with it, and we have that estimate. And we have that quote from...
Stephanie, if I could just interject. A lot of people probably aren't familiar with the term co-stars. Can you just explain that?
Thank you.
That is a state bid where we can piggyback on the bid. So we don't have to incur the cost to do that because the state has already done that for us. And they have vendors on there that we can work with and have them provide us with the facility, and we have that quote from them already.
So to, to answer, just as, as Jeffrey was saying, if you're not talking about the Comfort Cottage, the recreational building and the courts were bid together for the best value, right? If you want to separate the two of those out, we could use our expertise and give an idea of what we think the two, the difference between the two, what the price would be for just the courts. But that's going to be inflated if you go back out and have them just do individuals. So, so together, it's cheaper. If you, if you want to separate them out and do one at a time, there's going to be a premium for that.
I believe that Ryan separated them out just so we have an idea of what those costs are.
To give you an idea, roughly one point, I mean, 10, 10.1 for the building and 1.5 for the courts.
1.5. And then what about the courts? Are we using anything we have? And we have some nice courts right now, and I think that's what some people are concerned about, is we're moving something that we already have. And we had, we had, I think we had a number of like 700 and something sitting in our budget line for these courts, until we finally said, okay, they have to be moved. Are we reusing the lights or anything with this new courts, with these new courts?
The answer to that question is there's, what is it? What are you saying? There's five?
Dave, I think Dave can answer.
Can you just use the microphone? Joey, when you speak?
Hi, Ryan. Sorry. Ryan Kennedy, MKSD Architects. We are reusing five lights. We did assess everything, and that's what we accounted for that was salvageable.
Five, and how many do we have now currently? Do you know?
I don't know.
Those, let me interject. Those lights are the existing loop road lights and the, and the lights in the parking lot, the existing courts, the surfacing, the nets, the fencing, the lights are not, they're past their, their useful life as far as, and if we were to, if there was a project that we had to resurface, all that was getting replaced anyway. And we were going to resurface the courts totally to a new surface. So all that was, is not reusable.
Okay. And how much square footage are we taking off of the park when we put, like how many acres, when we move the courts? Do you know what the acreage is? Someone asked me. I just wanted...
I don't know what to...
I figured I'd help with some of the questions that might come up.
I don't know.
Nobody knows?
No, I don't know.
We could run that analysis. We can measure it out. Get back to you on it. But it's, you'd have, you'd have to break out the scale drawings and take that measurement and calculate the... You're talking about the grass area, right? So beyond the street.
Joey, please speak into the microphone.
You're talking, you're talking about the, so where the, where we're showing the courts on this diagram, how much of that?
Yep, that whole square area that becomes, that's grassy now. So when you pull in on the left, it's a big open space.
What is the size of that?
And what's the size of that? Because it looks like it's pretty much going up to the pavilion, right? And then you have your pickleball courts right there, too. So whoever's running that pavilion just better assume that they're part of that activity center.
Yeah, we could take that measurement and get back to you.
Yeah, I'd just be curious how much space because people have been asking about that green space.
Okay, anything else?
Hold on, let me look. There was. And for the bathroom cottage, how many bathrooms? Did, did we still have six?
Yeah, I think it's proposed as six.
Yes, there are six bathrooms. Yes.
And there's an outdoor water?
Two outdoor water.
Watering. And then with the building, there were bathrooms. Did they eliminate those outdoor bathrooms? Are they still there? Just...
No, they're still part of the project.
Still there, yeah.
They're still going to have access to the bathrooms on the outside? Because there was talk about just plumbing them and adding it later. So I wasn't, wasn't sure what the final conclusion was.
If you look on the left side of the plan here, the gray, let me see if I can...
So they can access them from the outside?
Yeah, you'll see the doors, the doors right here.
Thank, thank you. My apologies. And let me see if there's anything else. Where's the building? I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Right, does any of the other board members have a question at this point?
I do not.
Dan, you good?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on. What's next, Ms. Mason?
We can start with public comments. First one would be Joe Lucatis, senior, from 50 Oakleaf Lane. That's okay.
If I could just interject before public comments, just a request for everyone, when you speak, to make sure you speak into the microphones because this is a recorded meeting. So it's really important that you speak into the mics so that your comments appear to those watching at home and later.
Before you get started, I'm not setting you out as an example, but I'm required to read. These are rules we pass in, in, every year in January when we have reorganization, and they are guidelines for public participation at public meetings. The first rule is prior to addressing the board, all speakers should state their name and address, and if you're related to an organization, please state that. Questions and comments should be addressed to the entire board, not to one individual board member. Questions and comments should be confined to the specific topic under discussion. Each speaker will limit his or her time to two minutes. And we have a timer here. I don't think we'll need it, but we, there you go.
Is this new? Is this new? The two ti, the two minute?
No.
It's in our, it's in our rules, two minutes. I don't think we've ever applied that until tonight.
Well, we've applied it at Park, we apply it when there's a large crowd. That's when we apply it. So...
Can I also, there are index...
It seems rules that you voted to approve, Nancy. So, I mean, just so we're clear.
I understand. It's just interesting that tonight is the night we rolled it out. That's an observation.
Can I finish? Can I finish so this man doesn't stand here and he can ask his question?
Do we have index cards for everybody out there that needs them? Yes, we have, we have cards. They're out front when you came in. If you feel you, if you thought maybe you didn't want to speak initially, but you want to speak now, feel free to go out and pick up a card, fill it out, and they will bring them back in to us.
All right. Speakers, I request that not to repeat what's already been said. It's expected that speakers will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum and civility. Written statements will be received if you would rather write down your, your, your presentation. And that's pretty much it for now, sir. Please.
Okay. My name is Joseph Lucatis, 50 Oakleaf Lane in Doylestown. As a new resident since 2019, I, I didn't really know much about this project. And now that I'm hearing and I'm seeing one thing, and then I'm hearing another. And basically what's going on is we're spending money that we don't have, so we're borrowing money to make something that nobody really wants. We have a Y. If you want to do something nice, give a couple dollars to the Y so that maybe they can add something or, or fix something up. But to spend 12, oh, it's gone, $12 million so we can have a pickleball court and have things out there that we already have. And the last part I want to say, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time, we keep blacktopping everything. One day, we're just going to have a whoosh of water. It's going to be like one of them slidey things that you buy the kid, you know, the water comes down. That's what this area is going to be because you're going to blacktop everything, put in a building that nobody wants, like I said before, and I think it's a waste of money. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next person is Don Borden. From 380 Sandy Ridge Road. I'm sorry.
Don, you just walked past the...
Either loc, that one's still working. Either location works, I think.
Okay, yeah.
He likes that one.
Hi. My name is Don Borden. I've been a resident of Doylestown Township since 1981. I've been working professionally in central Bucks County since 1975. Most of my professional career was working as a municipal consultant, both for planning and engineering. And in that role, I worked for Doylestown Borough, Warrington Township, Hatborough Borough, and Ivyland Borough. In all of those communities, there have been major improvement projects proposed, a lot of them in park and rec. Almost every one of them has met with tremendous success and acceptance by the residents. There is always some degree of disapproval, dissent in those projects. Our municipal government rules allow us to object to projects that are proposed for whatever reason. Two of those projects that I worked on, one was in Warrington Township, was the acquisition of the upper and lower Nike site, which, if you know anything about Warrington Township, probably two of the most successful projects in, in this municipal, central Bucks area. Central Bucks went, or rather, Central Park went through the same process. I joined the Township Park and Rec Board late 70s, and since that time, there has been well-known documentation about the need for a rec center, a public rec center in the township. We're talking about the mid 70s that this documentation exists from. We're talking about the mid 70s that this documentation exists from. I know I'm going to run out of time, but what I want to say is, in all of these projects, with all of the dissent that we received, it has been the vision of the elected municipal officials that have brought these projects to fruition, like Central Park, which is just an outstanding area, park throughout, not just the township, but the whole Central Bucks region.
Don, thank you, I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Okay.
More than out of time.
It's a matter of vision, ladies and gentlemen, and that's what we depend upon you to do.
Thank you.
Next to the podium is Jason Schumacher, and following Jason will be Fred Greco, just so everybody can be ready, we'll try to do it that way.
Hi, everybody, good afternoon, Jason Schumacher, 9 Bittersweet Drive, Doylestown. Last week, I started a petition regarding the recreation center project, because I'm not in support of it in its current form. I am, however, wholeheartedly in support of adding legitimate bathroom facilities by Kids Castle, refacing our existing courts, and upgrading our pavilion. I've got multiple pages here, but I've got one minute and 39 seconds, so I'm just going to try to go through it. This project will, in its current form, result in higher municipal taxes. To be clear, these taxes are different from taxes at the county level and the school district level, okay? What we do here is independent of those two entities. In addition to taxes going up, no matter how you slice it, this is a net negative to the environment, okay? When we are paving over multiple acres of green space to accommodate for a building when the YMCA is literally around the corner. All right, let's see. Last week, I met with two members from the board. I was told that what I wrote was loaded with inaccuracies and purposely misleading. I disagree with this assessment, because my numbers are correct and backed up with sources. All right, I've got multiple things, including the operating in the red with this project, with the projected revenue and expenses. I'm not going to get into the detail here, because I'm running out of time. The one thing, actually, two things very quickly. One thing I was referencing in a newspaper article saying that my estimated price was inaccurate, when, as the folks from Quattrofoil said, when we were here in July, we were given this 13 million, 916,116 dollars. I did not make that number up out of midair, okay? So there's that. I'm glad to see that the number here total is coming less, but that was where that number came from. The one thing that really stuck out to me is during that meeting, I was referencing the tax increases that were going to go up, okay? And what I was told was that, you know what, I've got it quoted here, I didn't record it, but I quote, "Doylestown Township residents can easily afford $106 a year, spread out over 12 months." Okay? I was shocked to hear someone actually say that, because, yes, I do acknowledge the strong demographics of Doylestown Township, including the high income levels, high employment levels, and high tax collections rates, okay? These things help propel the township to have the highest debt rating available, okay? But despite that, I think $106, we're now at $93, matters to many families, especially when factoring in the rising cost of literally everything since this project first started in conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher.
I urge you, please reconsider this in its current form. Thanks for all of your time.
Following Mr. Greco, who's coming to the microphone, will be Rob Caricelli, and then Peter Cox.
My name is Fred Greco. I am here to represent the Doylestown Athletic Association on behalf of the Board of Directors. We sent a statement out, and just like to read that to the public. Doylestown Athletic Association Board has discussed a CRC facility and the benefit to both the organization and Doylestown community. As an organization focused on service to Doylestown community, particularly Doylestown youth, we are very supportive of any opportunity that provides facilities, events that bring our community together in a positive way. Specific to this new facility and use by DAA sports programs, we will certainly explore its utilization within our various sports programs, and welcome the opportunity to see how it can be incorporated into our schedules. Thank you, and we look forward to when the facility is available for the Doylestown community, DAA Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Caricelli's coming, Mr. Cox will follow, and then Connie Morby.
Good afternoon, everyone, Rob Caricelli, 10 Squirrel Road, Doylestown. When I recently learned about this project, fairly recently, there wasn't much talk about it really in the township until as of recently. When I did inquire, I said, oh, I had no idea, you know, I was told that it's been years in the making, and, you know, I applaud everyone for that vision of getting that together, and that was pre-COVID. Now, I hear different, whether it's on social media, whether it's in the township, whether it's amongst neighbors, people don't know about it, people know about it, people are for it, people are against it. I don't know which way this township would go, but I was told that many people are on board, and that there were surveys done garnering interest from the community. I ask this, if at this time, we feel that there's a majority of this township that will approve this, that will want this, could this be put up for a referendum on Election Day? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Peter Cox, I live on Pineview Drive. I'll be brief. Virtually every neighbor that I have, every person that I have talked to in the Doylestown Township about this project, has essentially said no. They like the idea of upgrading the courts, they like, in fact, a lot of them love the idea of putting in the children's bathroom facility down near Kids Castle, because life is kind of tough when you've got a six-year-old that's got to go to the bathroom. The money that we're going to spend, in theory, had we built this building properly to begin with, we wouldn't have to spend, because if you go back to the original contract and the original documentation, the recreation center was supposed to be built at the same time this building was built, and it wasn't, because we went $3 million over on this building. The fact that we're going to spend another 13 and a half, 14 million dollars building a recreation center that is essentially a steel shed, where the floors won't be used by the basketball organization, despite what the DAA just said, every single athletic organization in this township has already said, it ain't hardwood, they ain't using it, they're going to keep going to the YMCA. On top of that, you're going to charge people every single time they walk into the building to use it, to do things in this facility that, who knows what they're going to do? If they want to work out, they want to ride a bicycle, they want to go swimming, they have a monthly membership to the YMCA, and if they're a senior citizen, they get a huge discount to be a member of the Y, not $10 every time they walk in. So the bottom line is, I would very, very much like to see, as was just referenced, a referendum, put it on the ballot, let the voters in this township tell the Board of Supervisors if they want it or not. That's not that difficult, and it's totally legal.
I want to just, if I could just, if I could just, before our next speaker, I just want to make sure when we're coming up, I want everybody to speak, but if you're going to make claims that are inaccurate, we can't make claims about organizations that, our sports organizations and athletic, I mean, you just heard the DAA Board of Directors, Doylestown Athletic Association read a statement in support, so let's not make claims.
Ryan, why don't we, why don't we just wait till the end and we can make our?
I know, but I want to make sure that we're not, I'm not.
We are not, we are not debating.
Let people say, let them say what they want, and you can make time. Nancy, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, please state your opinion, but make sure that you are giving factual information when you're doing that. The other thing I want to state, and I'm not going to wait till after, I'm just going to say, our previous, this building did not go over budget, that was not the reason that this waited, we were being fiscally responsible in separating the two projects, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Connie Morby, I live at 895 Lime Kiln Road. I have lived in the township since 1979, and now I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income. I think that the scope of this project should be put on a referendum. I don't see how you can say that everybody can afford an additional $93 every year. I would also like to point out that we're all residents of Central Bucks School District, and the school district is now going to have, most likely, a tax increase, because they owe so many female teachers back pay for the fact that they were underpaid compared to their male counterparts. So we are going to have an additional tax increase for this, plus the additional tax increase for our school taxes, which is going to be hard on senior citizens. The other question I have is, you've stated you had fundraising, is the fundraising complete? Do you have that 1.5 million already or not?
We have some, right? No, we do not.
All right, and what is the likelihood you'll get it?
Well, I don't know.
So what happens if you don't get it?
250,000 is what we have.
It is our goal. We haven't even approved the project yet. We hope to do that tonight, or not, but it's our goal, and we have a couple of years to reach it.
And what about the costs for all the people that are going to be needed to maintain all of these new facilities? I think the township residents need to have all of these figures before we can decide that, yes, this is something that we all need and want. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, we have Bill Blom, Blom, Blumman at 460 Wells Road, and, Blomgren?
Blomgren.
Blomgren, sorry. And also Joe Van Houten will be next, after Mr. Blom.
Bill Blomgren, 460 Wells Road here in Doylestown. My past is a commercial construction manager. I won't be able to speak to each individual line item that they put up, but there is a lot missing in that, I'll tell you that much. You don't have maintenance, you don't have a lot of the things that should be in there, technology, phone, data, so forth. All permit required where I work in Philadelphia and Lord Bucks. But what I can tell you is, since COVID, and prior to COVID, my increase on the $18 million building that I'm going to finally UNO next week was close to $4.5 million on an $18 million project, okay? You're going to have a huge increase. Economically, the time period we're in right now, it's not prudent, okay? It just, I mean, there are needs and there are wants. This is a want, it's not a need. I implore you, just think about that, table this, or put it to a referendum. Thank you.
After Mr. Van Houten, John Satorino, 82 Elfman, and Mary Ann Davies will follow him.
Good evening, Joe Van Houten, Old New Road here in Doylestown Township. Best-in-class communities are built on solid foundations. Residents of Doylestown Township are the strongest part of our foundation. We are resilient, service-oriented, and family-minded. Forward-looking financial management decisions benefiting our township are also part of that foundation. We've relied on our elected officials to assure our first responders are properly staffed and equipped, roads and infrastructure properly maintained, open spaces purchased, parks and township facilities built and maintained, and plans put in place to assure Doylestown Township remains the best-in-class community we all know and love. Recreation centers, as part of a park system, are a driver of property value increases. According to a report by the University of Washington, homes within a quarter mile of a park are 10% more valuable on average. Recreation centers and parks are often viewed as a symbol of community pride and active. Recreation centers are full of activities that enhance the lives of those living around them. The project being voted on this evening is an investment in the crown jewel of our community, Central Park, while expanding the great programs offered by our Parks and Recreation Team with an addition of a new rec center. Almost three decades ago, my young family decided to make Doylestown Township our home. Equally important to our decision was the top-rated Central Bucks school system and the quality of life offered by residing in Doylestown Township. Doylestown Township has been and will continue to be a great place to raise a family as long as we continue to invest in our community. To that end, I encourage my fellow residents to support the rec center and Central Park Improvement Project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Satriano, I'm on Elfman Drive, and this December, I've been a township resident for 50 years. I remember when Central Bucks, the park was just a farm field for Del Valle University. 25 years ago, I was, had a lower back injury, and I've been disabled ever since. I'm in extreme pain now, so I'm sorry for my voice. I spent the first couple of years bedridden, and then after that, I began rehabilitating myself. And most of that time, an effort was spent in the park. I can't ever tell you how grateful I am that the visionary leaders of the time found the money and the ability to turn that field into a park. The amount of time I spent there, I see how incalculably important the park is to a wide swath of our population, residents and non-residents. Over that time, I got to know Karen and a lot of the staff very well. They always went above and beyond to help me when I overextend myself, which is often. And one of the first things I said to her when I met her over 20 years ago was, we don't have an indoor facility? I can't imagine what we need more in this community, I can't imagine a better investment for this community. For $93 a household, there isn't a single household that can afford a family membership or even a single membership at any gym. I agree with basically everything Mr. Van Houten said, please be the visionaries that are, the same as the visionaries that developed the park in the first place. Thank you very much for your efforts.
After Ms. Davies, we'll have Janet Passerini and Paul Donella.
Sure, can you hear me? I want to thank all of you, the company that did the bids, I know that you worked hard for two years doing this. It is a wonderful vision, however, my issue is just the timing and the cost. I'm a Doylestown resident, 446 Cobblestone Way, we have lived here for almost three decades now, 26 years. We moved here shortly after the wonderful grand opening, or right before the grand opening of Kids Castle. I had the pleasure, the pleasure of meeting Dawn through our children, and then working on the renovation and the, and the, you know, it was after like maybe 15 years, the renovation of Kids Castle project, which was fantastic, so I just want to say that. But however, I'm worried about the numbers, and just like in any, you know, any home improvement project, you might have these wonderful things that you have a vision for that will, you know, may, will definitely improve your home. However, due to costs, and especially now, the inflationary pressures, I'm worried about this. If, even if we fundraise and we had the 1.5 million dollar grant from Steve Santasiero, we are still, that's only $3 million, the cost, the papers reported 3.9, and you gentlemen reported, and you reported 12.9. So still, there's a deficit of $9.9 million. And I believe, you know, after all this time at Kids Castle, the one thing that everyone talked about then, now my oldest child is maybe going to have grandchildren from me, but the bathrooms, we didn't have bathrooms, it took, it's almost, you know, 25 years we don't have bathrooms. I think that is absolutely something that we have to spend money on, the security cameras, too. You know, if the courts need refurbishing, our family, when we first moved here, that was the first place that our realtor took us, and that we spent a ton of time with the kids. They had their soccer there, they had track there, they played, you know, in the castle, we've played in the pond, in the creek, or, excuse me, the creek. So I, because of the cost and because of the timing of all of this, I really, really respectfully.
Thank you, Mrs. Davies.
Respectfully ask that you bifurcate the project, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Janet Passerini, 420 Wells Road. I'm here because I'm very, very concerned for many, many, many seniors that live in this township that are just collecting social security alone, who go to the senior center for their main meal for $2 a day, because that's all they have. A lot of us, and me, you know, are working part-time jobs to help pay the additional taxes as we are, so we just, we can't do it. Is this tax increase going to quote-unquote "make us sell our homes" because we can't afford to? Is this tax increase going to quote-unquote "make us sell our homes" because we can't afford to live here anymore? I'm very, 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 very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Donella, 202 Old Dublin Pike, 10-year board member of the Park and Recs Board.
Park and Recs Board.
Just pull it up. There you go.
You. Really just here to say, support this project. I've been involved over the past 10 years in all the different conversations, and I think it's time that we move ahead with it. And I trust the board and their decision, but my personal opinion is that we move forward with it. There's a lot of pluses here, a lot of things that we need. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be Joy Feagles, followed by Andrew William Graham. Okay. Next is Andrew William Graham, followed by Chris Susinguth.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Andrew Graham, and I live on Turk Road here in the township. And I'm very concerned about the taxes. The taxes in Doylestown Township has a reputation for having high taxes. And now we're talking about this, this project that, you know, seems to keep being inflated. And some of the speakers have said that there may be, we should expect some cost overruns in, in this day of inflation. I think it should be expected by everyone. The, there are some costs that I recognize that aren't addressed in this proposal, namely that there's going to be maintenance of an additional building. There's going to be, probably there's going to be more staff to, to fund, to take care of the building. And then there's going to be the staff to run the recreational facility and so forth. So those costs are addition to, to costs that, that you've put up and advertised as being the price of, of doing this project. We're retired, and I second those who are in the township that are on fixed incomes and, and won't be able to afford the 100, it was supposed to be $100. I think we have to realistically look that it's going to be more cost to each of us. So I thank you for listening to my comments, and I hope you'll vote against going forward with it at this time.
After Mr. Susinguth, we'll have Ann Woodbury and Joe Salvati.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Susinguth, 133 Wells Road. As most people, and last night I sat there and did about eight comments, questions, concerns, you know, about the project, all three projects. And I wrote it down to three because we kind of all touched on the pros and cons. I'm in favor of all four projects, especially the security part, the bathrooms, so on and so forth. Costs, big concern, okay? Kind of concerned that each one of the four projects weren't bid individually, okay? Because then we can pick and choose à la carte what we need. I understand cost goes up a little bit, but we can plan for those costs in the future and know that X is going to happen and all that. But throw them all in the one big pot and have this giant number that may or may not increase, it may not increase our taxes. It was kind of not a good idea, all right? So that's on the negative side. I'm a fixer guy, so I'm going to add an idea. Why don't we go look for something within the township, i.e. the old barn movie house or the old Marshalls Department Store, renovate those. Marshalls, if it's available, it's, it's an open room. It's just like this. And you can do everything you want to do inside. You can do pickleball. They already have bathrooms. They already have plumbing. I bet you it even has sprinkler systems in there. It's away from the community per se with neighbors, so we don't have to worry about additional traffic, initial noise and stuff like that, especially if it goes later. So that's a positive comment. My last, I'm going to leave on the negative, I guess, and let's see if I can think of one more positive. Usage. I really don't think we're going to get the usage out of the building. Not to say we may or may not, but I don't think we will. On the positive thing, overall, you guys do a pretty good job. Doylestown's a nice place to live, and our police do a great job, and Cedar Park, and our township employees, right? So it's a positive. Thanks.
Hi. Ann Woodbury, 680 Spring Valley Road, Doylestown. I know this board. I'm on, I'm on our EAC. I've been on that for quite a while. I know EAC did propose to you guys the idea of making it a green building, and that was ultimately not moved forward. I will say that was hugely disappointing to the people that worked for many, many, many hours to give you the presentations on the green building, and I'm really sad that that didn't happen because if we're going to look to the future, we need renewable energy. I mean, it just is. The rest of my comments have already been covered. I really do, would urge though that the board reconsider the idea of adding a referendum to the next election. Thank you.
After Mr. Salvati, Donna Shannon and Steve Pierce will follow.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joe Salvati. I live in Doylestown Township, down the road from here, 3 Bittersweet Drive. I've been a resident here for about 22 years. I originally moved here because I found a property with a house on it that I loved, and I decided to stay here because I grew to love Doylestown Township. And when I was trying to figure out what it was about the township that I loved, of course, we come up with things, the parks and our roads are plowed when it snows and a lot of items like that. But over the years, I've had the opportunity to volunteer on a lot of township committees: Traffic Advisory Committee, Telecommunication Committee, Parks, Kids Castle. I just had that opportunity to do that. And through those hours spent working with the township, I got to learn a lot about the people who work for the township and the supervisors. And I have to say that everybody that I've met really has the township residents in their forefront. Everything that they're doing for this project is for us. There's no hidden agenda. So I realize that nobody's mind is going to be changed today, but I want to let you know clearly that I think this project is very worthwhile for our young children everywhere through to older adults. I think it's good for the able-bodied as well as special needs. So I urge the board to please move forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Donna Shannon, 103 Steeplechase.
Ms. Shannon, can you speak?
I'm sorry. 103 Steeplechase. I come here almost every month. I was here back when we had a feasibility study on the solar and geothermal, and the supervisors did not know that geothermal was not a, a power source. It is a heat transfer source. That, that was also wasted money because there's already plenty of studies that this area is not feasible for a structure such as this and what would be the rec center. I grew up in Philadelphia where we had rec centers. They were free, meaning that the taxpayers paid for it. There were no fees to get in. When I moved here, I knew three things. Fannie Chapman is where you swim. The YMCA was where you went to go do indoor things, and our lovely park is where you did outdoor things. We do, we need outdoor things. Like I would, I would appreciate much more outdoor things. And I am a sitting board member, an executive board member of DAA. I'm not speaking on behalf of DAA, but we did not vote to, to approve this. We would entertain maybe using it. We do have a lot of facilities that we do use. And when there is a tight spot where there's a week or two or there's a no game area, we will use a facility, but we will not use it, to my knowledge, on a regular basis. We do use Plumstead Christian, I think, occasionally when we have snow days to make up for. And, and I agree that there's plenty of empty lots. The Sears Hardware, the Halloween store hasn't even used it this year. It's been sitting open for most of the year, and I think we could utilize that better. Thank you.
Yes. Amy McGranhan and Heidi Lantini. And then following that will be David Borak.
Didn't mean for that to happen. Hi, Amy McGarren, Southwind Drive in Doylestown. I'm a 30-year resident of Doylestown. I was one of the volunteers to build Kids Castle 25 years ago, and we've enjoyed it for many, many years. In fact, my daughter and her husband went to visit it this summer when they were visiting here. I want to say, look at this beautiful building that we're in now. Years ago, we met in trailers. So I appreciate the vision to build this building here. We need the vision to improve and enhance our parks and recreation and support our community. I also question why this project has been in process for at least four years now, but we are just now having this public dissent.
Heidi Lantini? Okay. David Borak, followed by Ron Kopko.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. David Borak, 16-year resident of Doylestown Township. I live in close proximity to Central Park. I'm a father of three active children here. We utilize Central Park quite often, have been for the last 15, 16 years. Looking forward to being able to bring my children over to utilize the, the new courts and enjoy the new community rec center. So I'd just like to say thank you to the supervisors and to the township employees for their hard work over the last three years, and we're looking forward. Thank you.
Followed by Mr. Kopko, who's coming to the microphone, will be Dorothea Graham, followed by Nate Bauer.
Good evening. I'm Ron Kopko, resident. So far, I've got everybody beat. I've lived here 50 years this year. 30 years involved in various capacities with the township government. What I'd like to do is simply quote to you from our township newsletter published by the Board of Supervisors. This is June 1993. The advantage of having lived this long is I remember things. And I've got, I wish I had 15 minutes. This is a critical issue for the township. The title of this section is Township Begins Fundraising Program for Central Park. It states, "The Central Park Facilities Planning Committee, under the chairmanship of Township Supervisor John T. Carson Jr., developed a long-range plan for a family-oriented park dependent on the wishes of the residents of the township. Public funds will be used for construction of parking lots, playing fields, trails, and support facilities. Private funding will be solicited for more costly items, including a community center, tennis courts, and a swimming pool complex. Other opportunities for private funding include tot lots, an open-air amphitheater for entertainment, basketball courts, and a baseball field." My comment is, Mr. Garten, I submit to you that this is a binding contract with the residents of this township. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Dorothea Graham, and I have everybody beat so far. I've lived here all my life, which is 71 years. My grandparents bought my house in 1941, and I have lived there three generations now. And I have several concerns. Cost is going to be higher than what you're talking about because of construction costs. Taxes are going to be higher. There's no doubt that they're not going to stay at $93. I have a concern about the green space. There are so many young people playing on those soccer fields now that are going to be covered with other fields of, of mecanma or whatever else. We have pickleball courts already in Cross Key. We have wonderful facility at the YMCA. And I don't understand why we really need an indoor gymnasium. I don't see it. I can see the bathrooms down at the castle. I think that's really important. My other concern is, in living where I live on the dead-end part of Turk Road, I don't even, I can't even walk up Wells Road to get here to the park. It's too dangerous. There ought to be a, if you want to spend some money, how about a sidewalk? Just so that more of the community can make it up to here in a safe way. We have bikers biking up and cars coming around the corner. It's, it's dangerous. So I really hope that you reconsider and put this on a ballot.
After Mr. Bauer, will be Kelly McGowan and Mary Kaufman.
I am Nate Bauer, 74 Chapman Road. I represent the delegation from Pine Mill Circle, where no one I've ever talked to likes this idea of this building. Everyone likes the bathroom. Everyone thinks we need a bathroom. No one thinks we need a rec center. In fact, until today, I've never heard anyone say anything positive about this idea. So I really don't think the due diligence has been done to survey the community and find out what people think about this. And if you really want to know, we're talking about, you guys were talking about $100 a year. Take that number and divide by the number of households. It's roughly in the order of $2,000. Put it that way, put it to people, and let them make their own choice. So I do have a question. What have you done to show that there's any community support for this? Because like the gentleman I happened to sit beside today said too, I've never seen anyone who thinks this is a good idea.
We've, if you're asking a question, I can share a little bit. We, we had 143 meetings, public meetings, where the project was discussed. And on February 21st, or February 10th, February 23rd, February 25th, and March 2nd and 3rd, we had focus groups with neighbors, program partners, potential community partners, athletic partners. So, I mean, we've, we've tried to get the word out about this, and, you know, we're, we're here and we have public meetings where we've shared, and, and I've sat here, but most people don't even, never even heard of this till a couple of weeks ago. Well, I know, but, but how, okay, okay. But I'll say to that, my, my, and listen, I, I, I'm not faulting anyone for not hearing of it, but there were 143 public meetings since 2016.
When you're not overspending, nobody pays attention to the town.
Well, but, but, but that's, but that's, but you can't put that on, on, on us as we've been working on this for many, many years, and we have-
You didn't send a letter out?
Send a letter out to every resident?
You sent a brochure out.
We did the newsletter.
We've, we've sent it out. It's been in the newsletter, just so you know. It's been in the newsletter, which goes out to township, every township resident.
With no cost?
Five times.
At any point, was there a cost on it?
There were costs.
Was there a cost on it? There were costs in it. Yeah, there were estimates in it.
I don't think so.
There absolutely were. There was, in the June newsletter, it came in at, we, it was at, I think, 9.9. It was around-
In the fall.
And, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there were costs in it.
I'm going to interject, because we have a resident here who's asking questions. And I know how intimidating it is to go up on a microphone and be picked on, so I understand.
I'm not picking on you.
So let me just finish. So the first time it got announced was when the $1 million grant was given. That's the first time, I think, people really started to pay attention, like, wow, they just got $1 million for this grant.
That was not the first time it was announced.
First time it was announced, because I asked specifically, why are we not putting it on our website? Why are we not telling people about the rec center? So I 100% agree with you. The first time, and you know when that was announced? After our board meeting. So as a board member, I didn't even know we'd gotten that grant until after it happened.
Ms. Santa Cecilia, you have.
I agree. Let's not, let's not lie to the public again. Let's make sure we're telling the truth that we say here.
Spanish public comment.
Yes, and then we can have conversation or comments from the board. Go ahead.
Pickleball is a fad, there, I said it.
Okay, thank you.
Pickleball's a what?
A fad.
Yeah, okay.
Kelly McGowan, followed by Mary Kaufman, followed by Judy Dixon.
Board members, good evening. Kelly McGowan, I am a township resident for the past 15 years, grew up in Doylestown, have been raising my two kids here. Sorry. You'd think I'd do this enough. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. In addition to being a township resident, I have served on the Township EAC in the past. I'm also a current board member of your Park and Rec Board. So I have had the opportunity, over the past three years, to see all of the reports, to review the due diligence. I've also had an opportunity, and I did this actually on my own, not as a Park and Rec Board member, to go to other rec centers, most recently last week, and talk to other rec directors, to see how these indoor facilities are used, and to see after they have gone through the process, and trust me, even as recently as last week, their rec director in a local borough said, Kelly, we've been through this. We did this. We've done it. And she said, we're so glad we did. This is how it is developing. It is an investment in the future. I appreciate the board going through their due diligence. I appreciate all of the work that you have done. I've seen it. We've seen it. And based upon all of that information, I am also in support of moving forward with the facility at this time. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Mary Kaufman? No, Mary Kaufman, okay. Judy Dixon, followed by Nicolette Harrison, followed by Fran Cardassi.
Thank you. I'm Judy Dixon. I live in Doylestown Township. I've been going to the township meetings for the past year or more, and I've been going to various committee meetings. When I watch this board work for the people of this township, it's very impressive. They come prepared before each and every meeting. They have the best interest of the residents at heart. They work in a bipartisan manner. They want a solution. I've seen people come up here because they want backyard chickens, and they've been turned down in zoning, and this board tries to get away, find a way for the situation to work. I've seen people come up here with speeding issues on their road, and this board tries to find a way to make it work. They do a good job for us. They have our best interest at heart. I believe in them, for the most part. There's always a caveat. 25 years ago, I moved to Doylestown Township, and across the street from me was an asphalt sidewalk, and it didn't go anywhere. And I thought, what is this here for? And 25 years later, we have 30 miles of parks and hike and bike trails. And that was a vision that someone saw and put together. That's one story. The other story is the story of Central Park, and that was 30 years ago. And that cost would have been $16 million today. And we have an amphitheater, we have Kids Castle, we have soccer fields, we bring community together with these different park projects. So based on that, the vision that the township supervisors have, based on their good work ethics and research, I think we should support them, and I do support whatever decision you come to today.
Followed by Fran Cardassi and Les Geisel.
My name's Nicolette Harrison. My address is 6 Stone Barn Court, Doylestown. I'll keep this short and sweet. I just want to express my support for the rec center, because I think it's an investment in our community, especially our younger generations. It offers more unity in our community and encourages physical activity. Thank you.
Fran Cardassi, Les Geisel, followed by Amy Cosden.
I see no one coming up at this point.
Okay.
Hold it, Les.
Second name. Les Geisel? Nope, Amy Cos, Mr. Geisel?
Geisel.
Geisel, sorry. Sorry.
Long, high, shorty.
Okay.
Most of my concerns have been addressed. I wanted to know what percentage of the green area will be taken, percentage or acreage? That was the one thing. As far as the $100, $106 a year, you know that's bogus. Taxes never go down. And I can take the hit. I can take a $200 hit, but unselfishly, a lot of people can't. And that was one of my concerns. And what about infrastructure? Are they going to, is there a residual cost for any infrastructure on Wells Road that has to be widened, more pavements, anything?
No.
No extra street lighting, nothing?
No.
And I don't think these bids are going to stand either. Thank you.
After Amy Cosden, Judith Walker, and Christine Morda, I think it is.
Hi, my name's Amy Cosden. I've lived in Doylestown Township for the past six years. I've known Doylestown my entire life. I'm a 1989 graduate of New Hope-Soulbury. My parents still reside in the home I grew up in, in Lumberville. Doylestown was the big city for us. It took, this is where we came for everything, and I've seen all the changes right when the park opened. I was astounded that, you don't have to pay to get in here? Like, it was great for us, particularly being a rollerblader. My concern is now is the green space and making more impervious surfaces. Being one that is always curious of things, when we started getting the tornadoes nearby in the area and right through the hospital, the surreal photos of the hospital children's care, I'm getting nervous.
Village.
Yeah, the nursery school, whatever. You know, seeing all the slides and all, that was surreal to me. That was heartbreaking. Me, I'm astounded by Google, and you can put in keywords, you know, why are we getting more tornadoes up here? Well, the research is showing that although we're not turning into a tornado alley, the numbers in tornado alley are lowering, and the numbers here are rising. And the concern is, the more green space you remove with impervious surfaces is basically a tornado magnet. That's my concern regarding that. And maybe, I support your decision, whatever, I'm a big one advocate of majority rules, but maybe I obviously want the bathrooms and, but the rec center, you may want to reconsider some things, like a rooftop garden on it, and things along that line. Just, you know, we don't, we're not going to have much if we don't have homes. You know, and it's also affecting your surrounding neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Walker?
Is that Walter?
Walker. Judith Walker? She's right there. Followed by Christine Morda and Glenn Nemets? Sorry.
I've been born and raised here for at least 80 years. My only question is to these gentlemen here, I looked at your numbers. I know nothing about construction, but what are soft costs?
Yes, please.
All right, it's good that you ask that, because I heard a couple of comments about not holding AV, not carrying AV, or, you know, like the cameras that are up here, or televisions and things like that. That's, that's the kind of things that we carry in soft costs. So the security costs, the AV costs, the things that the contractors aren't doing, phone, internet, those are the, those are the soft costs that are being carried in that total cost. So sorry that the gentleman thought we didn't have that covered, but it's in that number.
Who's next? Next is Kristen Morda.
And then?
And then Glenn Nemets? Not sure. Can't see if it's an O. Nemets, go ahead.
Hi, Christine Nemeta, Doylestown Township, 11 Bula Road. I was born and raised here. I learned how to ride a bike and rollerblade in Central Park. A neighbor just sent around the petition last week, and I thought, you know, gee, if this is the first someone is hearing about this project, it's pretty scary. The cost and the taxes and the quote-unquote "lack of transparency." I actually lived in a different state for the better part of the last decade, and I knew about the project. So I'm glad people are paying attention, because it's a really awesome project. And in terms of lack of transparency, Ms. Mannion, you hit the nail on the head, there have been so many public meetings about this project. It's been circulated in the newsletter, Facebook, Twitter, you name it. So for folks who are kind of new to paying attention to municipal government, it is expensive to build and maintain and operate everything that makes Doylestown such a great place to live and such an attractive place for people to move to. So a lot of people who are just tuning in, I think, are considering themselves, or even people that they talk to in their neighborhood, to be sort of armchair finance experts, or capital budget experts, or tax experts. But really, you know, this board has consulted a lot of people who are experts in those fields, when considering how to plan for and budget for this project. You know, I think we should let the experts in debt finance and, you know, capital project budgeting and things of that nature do their job, because they've done it really well. And this is a really exciting project. I am expecting my first child in 10 weeks, and I can't wait to bring my family to this great park that I, you know, grew up coming to, and, you know, teach them how to ride a bike. And Kids Castle is such an amazing part of our community. So thank everybody for, you know, supporting this project and for the hard work that's been done so far, and that will continue to be done in the future.
Glenn Nemets, 774 West Sandy Ridge? No? Okay. Vlad Madov? 67 Bittersweet?
Hello. Vlad Madov from 67 Bittersweet Drive. I live up the street. I've been here since 91. I left, came back, where is my family and kids here. So obviously, a lot of comments have been recovered. I think my question is more around, if you look at the, just around, the roads around here, we have one lane, Wells Road, one lane, Alms House, one lane, Turk Road. When we do, you know, concerts in the summertime, it's a mess to get here, right? Huge traffic congestion. Someone else actually mentioned earlier, which is the reason I'm here, obviously, there's no sidewalks to really walk that way. But my question is, have you guys done a traffic planning study to understand how many more cars will be coming here? Right? Especially if you look at Turk Road, there's a stop sign, at least, turning right. There's a lot of cars just whizzing by really, really fast, right? So I just think you guys should do a traffic planning study, understand additional congestion is going to be here. And maybe, as part of us, think about widening roads, making, making two lanes each way on Wells, maybe Turk, which will increase the cost, but I think that's right and safe to do it, if you guys are going to do it. And by the way, I'm not for it. I do think we need bathrooms, 100%, but overall, I think being fiscally responsible, law-abiding citizens, we should probably revisit some of the other things here, just from my past experience during business and construction. But I do think you guys should look into having a traffic plan, figure out how many more people are going to be coming here, and what additional rush-hour traffic, or just any congestion is going to be created as a result of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Walther, who I think left, and Morgan Bryan and Danielle Seoffe? And, oh, someone?
Someone's standing up.
Nope.
Can I speak for Cindy Walther?
In due course.
Okay. Could she ask me to speak for her?
In due course. Okay.
Hi, my name is Morgan Bryan. I've lived in Doylestown my entire life, 27 years. I'm in support of this project, and I believe it's a valuable investment in our community. More specifically, I think it's an investment in our future generations here, my future kids, I hope to stay in Doylestown, my future grandkids. It also provides a safe space to execute programs and gives adolescents a place to hang out that is active and engaging. And I also want to note that the YMCA is very expensive. It's about $77 a month for anyone age 19 to 64, unless you're an employee, which I used to be, and I have to say, that was the last time I used the YMCA, because it's so expensive. Personally, I'd also like to say it's hard to get people to come out in support of something. It's much easier to come out when you've been angered by a Facebook post or something else. So I came here to express my support and my maybe unpopular opinion. Thank you.
Danielle Seoffe?
Hi, good evening. My name's Danielle Seoffe, 6170 Honey Hollow Road. I'm also here on behalf of the YMCA. So I want to say thank you for all of those who have recognized the YMCA as a community partner. We appreciate your support. The YMCA is a nonprofit charitable organization that is committed to strengthening communities through youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. The YMCA is committed to partner with the township, and we remain committed to explore opportunities together. We agree that there are limited courts available throughout the township, specifically indoor courts. The YMCA does have outdoor courts that we would be open to a conversation about enclosing those for additional space throughout the community and for our residents. Y currently serves over 50,000 members across the association, 13,000 of which here in Doylestown. We serve over 6,000 children in summer camp and over 1,000 children in childcare. We provide over $5 million in community impact programs and financial assistance to those who cannot afford us otherwise. We provide, we hope, we believe that everybody, regardless of their background or financial ability, should have the opportunity to these services. To reiterate, the YMCA is here to partner with the township and continue to support and serve our residents here in the township. And we're open to exploring in a mutually beneficial partnership together. Thank you.
So before, Steve McComas, 7 Sterling Crest Court. So Cindy, before she left, asked me to mention that she supports this in terms of needs of special needs children. I think we should consider that, also for adults who already use the facilities to play games.
Okay. Last, we have Blythe Kelly.
I'm Blythe Kelly, 135 Wells Road in Doylestown. I'm the chair of our Township Park and Rec Board. I'm here today, not only because I am an 11-year volunteer on this board, I'm also a 19-year resident of this township. I am endorsing my full support of this Community Rec Center and Park Improvement Project. Our Park and Rec Board consists of seven members, all volunteers, all township residents. Six of us are here tonight. On behalf of our board, I can say that we are in full support of this project, and for good reason. We see that our community is in need of activity space, meeting space, and all the sport courts included in this project. It has been almost eight years since we lost our activities building, consequently losing the ability to offer the many community programs and activities that we had, and resulting in the loss of revenue. Karen, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and her staff have done an excellent job in finding some space in other buildings in other townships. However, it's not enough. It's not enough to meet our community needs. We need more, and our residents deserve more. Our board has done its due diligence. Our members- has done its due diligence. Our members have visited other townships, community centers, interviewed their managers, and were told a full-size gym is a must. We support a design that will give us what we need now and what we need moving forward for our community and residents, the young, the elderly, through its services as well as its rentals. Please do not discount our efforts, our input, nor our full support, as we all vote in favor of moving forward with the Community Rec Center Park Improvement Project. Thank you.
First, I'm going to put this fake microphone away because it keeps tricking everyone. So, uh, just real quick, we heard a couple of questions that I felt it was good to answer, and especially the one that was asked by the supervisor at the beginning. We had our back of house team do the calculations just for folks that were concerned. The amount of green space or acreage of that field that is going away as a result of this moveover is under an acre. It's about .6 acres. So because a lot of it's the current roadway and the current courts, there's really not a lot of impervious being. It's definitely not multiple acres as we, we heard at one point. So I wanted to just clarify that.
Thank you.
And then also the comment about stormwater management. I just want everyone to know, as your consultant and, and your design team here, stormwater man, and I sit on the Wipane Planning Commission, and so I know that stormwater management is pretty much the most strenuous thing that any project, residential, township, anyone has to pass. So you can rest assured that we're going to, we're going to do everything and make sure that our designers do everything in accordance with your stormwater management plans. And you should not, they shouldn't add a sheet of water to your, to your neighborhood. So that's just two clarifications I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're not, you have to take the microphone or have a question maybe at another time.
Thanks for actually addressing those two points. Uh, what about, uh, traffic planning, studying, and design? Have you guys done that? Because that's probably really important.
We're waiving land development as part of this project, but we don't anticipate the traffic to, um, really mo, moderate anywhere that, that what it is today.
Based on what studies or numbers?
Based on the information that, um, our consultants have reviewed and everything.
If you could add that to a list, I think it'd be really important. I live up a street and I just know that it's always, always backed up to the Lower State Road for any concerts.
That's different for the concerts. That's a special event that's held?
But I'm sure there'll be a lot of special events happening there as well. So if you could add that to a list, potentially to do some kind of planning for traffic.
Okay.
That'd be really appreciative.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, um, any, any other comments?
We are done with the public comments.
I do want the, um, solicitor to address the five, five requests, six requests regarding referendum and the legality of referendum.
Well, let's discuss referendums. And I have the referendum handbook here because I knew it was going to be a topic. And effectively, you cannot have a referendum when you're just asking for opinions. You can have a referendum if you're intending to borrow money for a specific project because the laws in Pennsylvania cap the amount of money that a township or borough or county can borrow based on your revenue. But if the voters approve the borrowing, it doesn't go against your limitations. So if the board was intending to borrow money because it needed to exceed its limitations, it could go to a referendum on whether you want to borrow money for this project. So that's the only premise upon which a referendum can occur. Can't you just non-binding advisory opinions?
All right. Any other comments from the board?
Um, I'll start. I just, I want to thank everybody, um, for coming out and sharing all of your comments, your questions, your concerns. Um, I want to, I want to say a couple of things. Number one, regarding the, the increase to taxes, um, I do not take any tax increase lightly. Not $1, not $2, not any amount of money. So I, I hear you and I understand where you're coming from. Um, I was elected to this board 12 years ago to make decisions for this township. A lot of those decisions are hard because there is really no decision that we make behind, you know, sitting up here that there is 100% full support. So with that, I have to do my job as a township supervisor to weigh the pros and the cons of every decision and make the best informed decision that I can make. I appreciate hearing your comments here tonight. Um, I will say that my decision is not based off of tonight. My decision is based off of the last several years that this project got started, started being talked about, and came to fruition. So with that, you know, I, I would also mention that, you know, my voting, my voting history shows that I am the most fiscally conservative voting member of this board. Because of that, please know that I don't make any decision that is going to cost the town, our township residents more money lightly, but I am in support of this project because I see this project as an investment in the future of our township. I believe it is the right choice and that's what I was elected to do, to, to make these decisions. But I thank all of you for coming out. And for those of you that are opposed to this project, don't let this be, if, if it gets passed tonight, don't let this be the last time we see you. Come back and participate. Be active in what, you know, the next steps. This is, this is step one, you know? You, you heard, it's 14 months till completion. There's a lot of things that you can get involved and play a part in, in what this, this rec center and park improvement project looks like. And I think there's opportunity for us to work together to find common ground. Um, and I hope, you know, I hope in, in 10 years, every single one of you will see, uh, what a worthwhile investment it was for Doylestown Township. Thank you.
Um, Dan, you have anything more?
Yeah, just a, a few pieces. Um, uh, some of the questions that came up this evening were related to the cost of maintenance and operations of the building. And I just wanted to point out, uh, that we have, uh, all five supervisors on this board voted for studies to be conducted, uh, by a firm Ballard King and Associates to tell us the estimated operating costs and revenue of this building. Um, the most recent one, we reviewed in our July 2023 meeting, which had it at a 50, at, if we were operating at 50% capacity for the community center, that we would still, uh, cover over 28% of our expected, um, expenses, which would allow us to use that extra money to pay some of the construction costs of the building. So we are looking at that as a building and a program that can stand on its own. And that's at 50% capacity, looking at our current programs. Uh, what, if we have this building and the new, uh, courts and all that, we can look to do additional, uh, programs as well. As was stated, we have been operating our parks and recreation out of trailers, um, which has significantly scaled back what they are capable of doing the past several years. And right now, they don't even have that option. Um, I do want to address the, the question about, uh, the green building for this project. For me, there were two significant gut punches, um, when, for votes I had to take on this building. One was putting solar panels on the building, which is something, um, honestly, I thought should have been considered for this building. I really wanted it to be considered for the Parks and Recreation Building. Uh, prior to, to conducting the study about solar panel feasibility, this board, uh, made an agreement with a power provider for our township to get 100% renewable energy. Uh, and that's what's powering the lights right now. When the study came back, we found that we could put solar panels on there, but it would be more expensive than what we're paying now through a third party for, um, 100% renewable energy. That said, this agreement, I believe, only lasts five years in total. So we are constructing the building with foresight that we can put solar panels on it in the future, should that become a more cost-effective means for the township to meet its electric, electricity needs and the needs of our Ready for 100 program, which is a resolution this board voted, voted on to meet our energy requirements, 100% renewable power by 2050. We also had a similar situation with installing heat pumps for this building. Um, again, it was pointed out that for cost-effective reasons that, and for having a backup generator to heat the building, uh, should they lose power, that it was not cost-effective for us to do it at the time. Um, as part of that, again, forward-looking, at some point, we will have to replace that furnace. We have requested that this building be designed so that we could, if heat pumps become a more viable option that run on electricity in the future, that we can switch to that, again, with the goal of meeting our Ready for 100 needs by 2050. I believe that's about everything I have at this point. Um, thank you all for coming out. I do just want to take a moment to thank our staff and all of our volunteers who have put in countless hours preparing for this evening and everything that has gone into it, as well as our consultants and everything. Thank you.
Nancy, you have anything more? Sure. I think there's a hand being waved.
Excuse me. Sorry. Just needed to address that. Jason Showmaker and I'm Bittersweet. Dan, I've got the numbers that we were looking at in July. And I know you were just saying 28% of operating expenses if we're operating at 50% capacity. Okay? But these numbers are not a, a, a correct justification because in here, it shows that one existing full-time employee from the township and one existing part-time employee from the township is going to be allocated towards the new facility. And when we talk about those expenses, those two salaries are not included in here because they are current employees of the township.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's incorrect?
That's correct.
No, that's correct. They are current employees.
They currently work here.
Right, right. I understand. But if, if their time and efforts are going to be allocated towards the new facility, right? Why would those expenses not be added to the new facility's expenses, right? So you can say it's 28% if you're not including those expenses. I think that the way that you're, you're, you're explaining it is, is just incorrect. So again, these numbers are here, and I think when people are saying that you, you can't see the details, this is the type of stuff that folks are talking about. Okay? We see, you know, great project and it's, you know, shiny new things, but these details matter. Okay? Please, thank you.
And we have spoken about that, Mr. Showmaker.
What? I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
You were in the budget work session where we did speak about this. And we said that nothing, those employees are already being paid out of township funds today.
Right.
So to move them there, they are still doing their same job in that building. They are not adding additional costs. We would be paying these employees whether they work there or here.
That's enough. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jen, you have anything? Or you done?
I think Nancy has a couple of words.
Go ahead. You can go first. No, you go Nancy.
Okay, great. All right. Um, so I'm obviously the one that has a lot of questions. I have a question for our consultants. You've been doing all of these projects. What have you seen of terms of bids coming in and the percentage of overage? Um, I was here the day of the opening of the bids. I'm still being told by the electrical they're having a hard time with supply chain. So us having a 14-month timeline and what is, you know, what, what kind of, um, uh, buffer did you allow for? And what are you seeing in terms of, you know, overage? Because I think that's a huge concern. Because right now, this 12 million is like 75% of our operating budget. And I know, I wouldn't spend 75% of my operating budget on a project. So I'm just trying to understand where this is going.
Yeah, fair question. So I think, I'll speak for myself. You guys have any, you guys here?
As well in, in public bidding, you can mention it too. Certainly, projects do have change orders. And, and that's when, when the owner decides they want to change. So if, if there are changes in the course of the project, I would expect that those change orders would be an increase. However, I will tell you that right now, all the market trends in construction industry right now show that 2023 is the beginning of a construction cost decline. I started my career in 2008 when Doylestown Hospital built their ER. That's the first time that I saw a project begin during an economic downturn and the contractor at the end of the project gave a million dollars back to the hospital. It was the first, it's the only time I've ever seen that. And the times were like they are now. So I don't think it's, 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 I don't think it's unprecedented, unprecedented to see that the economic, economic downturn we're seeing right now and the trends in the construction industry aren't going to benefit you. Now, these are bided projects, so no one's going to give you any money back, but I do think that we're probably going to stay in line. The electrical, uh, shortages that you talked about, the worm is turning on that. The last remaining item that I've seen on the market right now that's difficult to get a hold of is transformers. And through, through planning and getting way out in front of that with our, with our engineers, we should be able to get those transformers in plenty of time. So I don't see any lead time issues causing any problems for us right now. These plans are really well done and we could, we could go out right now. As, once approval is achieved, we could go right after those long lead time items. So I would argue that there is actually, uh, the timing is on your side right now, but that's, that's my opinion. I don't know if you guys are.
Okay. Um, so that, that was just one of my questions. Thank you. Uh, my other questions come down to what isn't included in these bids? So we're at this number, right? Like, we had, we already had, like, and this is why I'm, and I'm not a finance person, and so Jen, you can jump in, right? We didn't, we had in one of our other statements, we'd already put out 705,000 in design and consulting. Is that considered in this cost that you've given us? That's not included, right?
Can we address that?
So we've already put out, the district, the township's already put out 705?
That's in the number.
Get you an answer. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
If anybody has an answer.
Answer. I don't know. Go ahead.
Yes, the, the design consulting fees are in, in the, in this presentation, in the 12.9 million dollars.
So the money that we've already been spending to get up to this point?
Correct. That's already in the number.
The money, let me, let me clarify. The money we're committed to under contract, which this board approved, what's been spent to date, that, or what's, we have to pay contractually is in that number. Correct.
Okay. And what is not included then in this to get to, I'm just trying to get to the total number?
Yeah. No, I, I understand what you're saying. So what we put together here is a total number. And as a military guy, I like to talk about bogies. Like, what is the bogey that's out there, right? I would argue that the biggest bogey out there is sort of an unknown about the bathrooms out down at the Kids Castle. We earmarked a value. We put that value in. It wasn't part of the hard bid. So when we do go to contractors and get hard numbers, is that going to be 633,000? Is it going to be more? Is it going to be less? I don't know. But that would be my, that would be the bogey in the back of it.
Right. Because we had 800, like, a month ago, and now it's 600. And obviously, it's like Christmas in July if you're getting the money back.
Sure.
But I just question, like, is the technology involved?
Yes.
Is everything all in? Because we didn't have that. The other thing, you know, for me, and that's, that's all I had for you. Thank you. The other thing that I want to just comment on is that, you know, procedurally, I don't even know how we can award bids when part of our calculation is including a one and a half billion dollar in fundraising. We have 250 that I'm aware of. There's been non-disclosures, so no one's allowed to know really what's happening. But we should not be using as an assumption when we're calculating this $93 in taxes. We need to do a snapshot in time. That's the right thing to do. That's what transparent government is about. Also, in our RAC grant that we got, and we have one and a half million dollars, and I'm very grateful for that, we put in there, we're bringing between $700 and $800, $800,000 in revenue a year. Yet our participation levels, because of trailers, because of the construction, were, are less than 1% in our township. That is a huge ask of our staff to get to that point, as well as our taxpayers to cover it until they're at some kind of capacity. Uh, and that, you know, I just think it's really broken the way we're asked to, to bid this without having a total cost. And we don't even have a profit loss of what this is going to look like. I met with Stephanie and I met with our director of, of, um, our, our budget analyst, and I met with our director of finance, and I asked for some type of profit and loss because the numbers they use, the drop-in costs, the memberships, we don't know. They're like, we'll see how that works. There's, there was a, an older gentleman who said he was told he would get free for, for silver seekers. We don't have, we have 25% of our constituents are 65 and older. I'm here to represent everyone. Not everybody in the fancy houses, not in everybody in the apartments, but everyone. And I think this is a really, really poor way to do business. And I do have a problem with transparency. The first 10 to 15, 10 meetings happened, we weren't even aware of it. It wasn't until Jen and I both asked and we got a list, and I don't have the date in front of me, from our former, and she sent, here are the minutes for all these minutes, meetings. So there, I do not feel that this board has done its due diligence. I also think that we are making a huge financial mistake. There are a lot of things that were suggested today, and I thank every single person that came. You know, when you talk about sustainability, Chris, you had a great idea, swipe your card. Why don't we use one of the buildings we have here? Why are we putting, you know, why are we hurting the green space that we all say that we support? This is a duplication of services. It's taking away from small businesses and gyms. And yes, there is ways to go to a gym for $10 a month through Planet Fitness. So there are affordable options. The YMCA has silver sneakers. Cornerstone has silver sneakers. And they're going to have gyms, pools, and opportunities that we can't offer. There's nothing here in this, this facility that isn't offered somewhere else. And I think people's biggest value of Central Park isn't offered somewhere else. And I think people's biggest value of Central Park is the green space. We saw that during COVID. We saw the, we saw a huge influx of everyone on our paths and trails. Let's continue to be the leaders. We don't need to be the trend setters. And I saw the Warrington Community Center. It's like 1,000 square feet. It's really small of what they're putting in. What we're putting in, we don't have the operation set up yet. And as for partners, I appreciate people coming from different organizations. First of all, it's nobody's responsibility, organization, to have to control or contribute to our revenue. If they want to do it, great. But we do not have a financial partner. And a financial partner is someone who's definitely committed to our financial bottom line, and that means your tax dollars. So we can't have our business taken care of and know what the right business plan is. I would implore the board, and I can't even say it enough because I'm sick thinking about it. I have my own mom, I moved up here, to table this project and parse out the bids according to the projects. Because the way it's done now, it's an all or nothing situation. And I don't think that's transparent. I don't think that's fair. You know, you're giving us, you give us the statement, and you break it out in three projects, which when you give out the bids, you give them out that it's an all or nothing situation. So I, I implore the board to listen to the people who've all come out tonight. It's really scary and intimidating to come out. And 4:30 was a sort of interesting time to have everybody here, so I appreciate that. That's all I have to say, but thank you.
Just to clarify, Ms. Sanchez, Cecilia, you voted for the 4:30 time slot. That was unanimous.
Well, you know.
No.
I'm all, listen, I'm trying to be a team player, Dan, because I get, I get called a bad guy a lot, so I'm okay. But you know what? I think word got out just fine.
Yeah, it did.
It did.
Thank you.
And I appreciate every single person being here.
Hi, Dan.
Well, I'm just going to reiterate what Supervisor Wood and Supervisor Mannion said. I, I do appreciate everybody coming out here, voicing their concerns. Believe it or not, no matter whether this goes forward or not, you've been heard, and we, we can work on implementing things that might alleviate some of your concerns. I also thank everybody that came out and support. I was very happy to see all of the people who felt Central Park was a huge part of their experience here in Doylestown Township, and appreciate this project for, for all the work that's gone into it. I'd also like to acknowledge the thousands of hours that Doylestown Township residents have dedicated to this project over many, many years, whether it was community members who volunteer their times and talent to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Ways and Means Committee, Park and Rec Committee, Environmental Advisory Committee and Planning Commission, all of those who came out to the informational sessions, attended the online informational sessions, those who came out to all of those public meetings that Supervisor Mannion spoke about, and even the people who emailed or called the township to discuss their concerns, or even their excitement about this project. There must have been at least 100 township residents that put their time in, and it's been thousands of hours, and, and now you're part of that, that equation. So thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. I also want to thank the engagement of all the athletic associations that we've worked with over the years. We've worked with the tennis teams, the DAA, we've worked with a, a lot of them to get this vision put together. And also, I'd like to thank the YMCA for coming out. And I know we, we talked with Cornerstone as well. So we have had a lot of engagement with the community. And, and I think, just like Kids Castle was a community effort, this is going to be a community effort. And so I'm just hoping that you'll continue to engage. Thanks.
Can I, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. I apologize. I just wanted to ask the board, because obviously I'm the minority, what is their max? What's their threshold? What I'm sure you're willing to spend? What if this, something happens? Are you willing to spend 16 million, the equivalent of our operational budget? I mean, we haven't even put any kind of stopgaps or guardrails on this. The other thing, so that's my one question to the board. And this other thing is, you know, Ryan, you reminded me, I went and looked specifically at what our tax increases have been since 2018. And I will tell you, there's between the school district, the county, and our township, the fastest, the, the largest growth has been the township. The district, believe it or not, was 1.86 between 2018 and 2023. Bucks County is 2.21, and this is in millage, additional millage, and our, and we are 3.575. So we're almost double the district. So my point is, this building got out of control. Things happen. I understand that. That's part of a project. We, all that, we all have contingency plans. My point is, we've already had our contingency plan when we did this building. You can see this beautiful Taj Mahal, right? You can see it. It's beautiful. We love it. We love our parks. We want to offer services. But why don't we be smart? I will say, I put a motion to put this project, to table it, and I was denied. I've asked for it to be put on a referendum, and the motion was denied. So I'm saying this because I hear you, so I want to do the right thing, and I wish the board would do the same thing. And I really would love to know, what is your threshold? Because I haven't heard it. I've called some of the supervisors. They told me they wouldn't tell me. I know what mine is, but I haven't heard it from anybody else.
All right, I have, I don't know how to answer that question. So I'm just going to move the matter to a vote, but I have three questions to ask our Quattrifull and Dave Tomko, Stephanie Mason. As we sit here today, do these numbers reflect the cost of the project?
Yes, they do.
As we sit here today, does your presentation reflect the scope of the project?
It does.
And as we sit here today, do these costs reflect the anticipated tax increase and impact to our residential households and commercial properties?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to put the question, is there a motion to approve the project?
Motion would be to award the four bids noted in the memorandum from the, your consultants.
What he said.
I'll make a motion to approve the four bids put in the memorandum from.
Don't we have to, do we have to vote on each bid, or do we vote on all of it at the same time?
You can vote on, because you can't, if you don't do the first one, you don't do the last three. So you might as well do them all at once.
So it's an all or nothing?
Well, it's an all or nothing because you can't award a mechanical bid if you don't have a building to put it in.
We have to wait for the devoting on presented before we have other questions, or before we get to this point about what state information's evening, which way can we go?
Come on, come on up, Chris. Chris, why don't you ask your last question, then then we'll move the.
Three items.
Well, go ahead, Chris.
We have a chance, okay. One is, show of hands. You know, throughout the, throughout the evening, we've had some positive clapping and some negative clapping. So I don't know if it's beneficial to really see, before you guys make your vote, really see by show of hands who's going to be it.
Chris, we need to see a show of hands.
Chris, we're not doing that. And there's 17,000 residents in Doylestown Township. Not all, all of them are here tonight.
That's correct. Okay, so that's one thing. All right, same one. Like was mentioned, there was a lot of different ideas and comments and things presented, safety concerns, other options and stuff like that, that we table this idea and readdress it by going back and looking at these different ideas and comments made, and also pulling out each one of these projects and separating. I understand it's going to cost a little bit more money, but what are the real, what's really needed out of these four projects? Security and electrics, one of them, right? Kids stand there, kids bathroom is another one. I don't think we really need at times the building right now, and we don't need additional tennis courts. Or at least, like I mentioned before, let's do it in phases or something like that. Not one hit, you know, big kit, kit and gable kind of thing. I think we ought to stop, readdress, because there's been some concerns, and then come back and readdress them at another meeting.
Thanks, Chris. I would make that motion to separate the bids into the project.
I've already made a motion. I've actually already made a motion.
Well, we stopped in the middle.
Excuse me? Is there a second to your motion?
Wait, wait, what, what are we voting on? I'm sorry.
The mo, go ahead.
I've made a motion to approve the, the, the four bids, including the bid alternates at a total of $9,793,100.
Can we table that, that conversation until we've, because we've got, we allowed.
I need a second.
I'm asking this, Cecilia.
Hold on, hold on. Is there a second? I will second that.
There's a second. You can, you can make your motion to table. It's relevant now.
I'll make the motion to table that.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion to table fails. There's a motion and a second on the project. I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the project?
Aye.
No. And opposed, one no. So four in favor, one no. That question is settled, and if there's any more public comment on something not agenda items, we can welcome them now briefly. And otherwise, we are not going to adjourn to the Budget Committee. I recommend that we reschedule the Budget Workshop to another day and time.
Agree. Do we need a motion for that? To?
Do we need a mo?
Yeah.
Was it publicly advertised?
Yes, it was.
You need a motion. I'll make a motion to.
Cancel the meeting.
Just because of the, to cancel the meeting just because of the time. It's an hour.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to cancel the Budget Meeting and schedule for another time?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one more question.
All right, we, we're adjourned. We'll take your question after, okay?
We didn't do public comment at the end.
We do public comment on non-agenda items is where we're at.
Well, if you have this many people, why wouldn't we allow?
We do public comment on all items, but Mr. Chris, why don't you just come up and tell us what you want to say? And then otherwise, we're adjourned, folks.
Now that we've got a word of mine agreed, we're passing the, the bid. I think this is my, what do we do now? Does it mean the project will move forward?
Yes.
We have no choice. Your money's been spent.
So like you said, I, I can't, I, I.
What do you mean?
You said earlier in your comments, when you were doing your, your piece, you said, hey, Julie, just run out, please, get left behind.
I didn't say get left behind. I said, I said be a part of the process. Be a part of it.
I have a question. I think it's not, it's not about this project, but I, one of the last.
Hold on. I know we're adjourned, but we do have somebody who wants to.
It's just a quick question. I was at one of the last meetings where they were discussing the security cameras and the urgency for that at Kids Castle.
Folks, 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 folks in the, folks in the gallery, please take your comments outside or be quiet in here so we can have a conversation. Folks.
The security, the security camera issue for Kids Castle, is that, are, do we have moving on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
They are installed.
Thank you.
I think we're done, so everyone can go home.
Step away from the desk. Sir, I'm asking you, please step away from the desk.
Adjourning by the chair.